Here.
Kenauer. Maxheimer.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Pomplusk.
Yes.
Brentmeister.
Yes.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of guests, it looks like Mr. Bowley is here with us tonight, as well as, your name was Sam?
Yep, I'm Sam Van Reedon, I'm from the troop here in town and I'm working on my Eagle Scout and I'm just here to take notes for merit badge.
Thanks for coming.
Yep.
Approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and the claims and accounts.
AET Energy, two thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars, Ameren, two thousand six hundred nineteen dollars fifty-six cents, Blue Cross Blue Shield, three thousand six hundred two dollars fifty, seventy-five cents, Casey's General Store, five hundred forty-three dollars forty-two cents, D and M Services, six hundred dollars, Erickson Davis Attorneys, one thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars, INB, four thousand four hundred sixty dollars seventy-six cents, Lincoln Iron and Metal, five hundred ten dollars.
Any questions or concerns on the claims and accounts? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, question?
My second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Is there any public comments on the agenda items? You have written down you want to talk about the TIF extension, that's actually on the agenda. You want to say some things now, or you want to just wait till we get to that point?
It's up to you, Matt, how do you want to run the meeting?
I tell you what, if you have a comment to make, we'll talk about it when it comes to the agenda, that'd be fine.
That's fine, sure.
Anybody else? Officer reports, Tony?
They're still going pretty good, like sort of going around checking intermodal vehicles, you know, making contact with everybody, trying to get them up to date or make them move them, so. Everything's still going pretty good.
Gotcha. Any questions for Tony? Matt?
Several brief things, one, we, obviously with the weather being the way it's been here lately, we've started doing some patch work. We've switched suppliers in our, our street patching material, seem to be working just a little bit better, it's a little more expensive, but if we get a little more duration out of it, I think it's worth its weight. Been in contact with Mr. Joe Lucas about some tree work, we're gearing up to rent a lift and basically denote a week to that, to get, utilize the most that we can of lift to get us, all the tree work that we think we can get accomplished in a week. Other than that, been working through some, some winter repairs from meter work from the winter we had, so been working through that, it's pretty much where we've been. Any other questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Matt. Tricia?
Deposits since the last meeting, nineteen thousand sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. I also, any questions? Businesses' tax and motor fuel taxes included in that. I have a tentative budget, I put one everybody's box, if everybody got one. Do you want to look over it? I changed the format just a bit, there used to be separate tabs for a lot of it, so I tried to condense it into three pages instead of seven. So, at the bottom of page three, with a general aggregate, that shows kind of the income, the expenses, and what we have left over from the numbers that I put in there.
Which one was that, the aggregate page?
Yeah, page three. I put general, street police together, and then combined the social security, IMRF, and liability insurance, because that's all in the aggregate, to make three pages instead of seven or eight. At the very bottom of page three, shows the total income, the total expenses. So then, the bottom shows. One, three thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents, I'm not sure where that fifty cents came from. Service. With the numbers that I have on here. And I did get numbers from Tony and Matt. So this is just obviously a tentative, if it needs to be changed, you can...
Is there any main, like, you want to point out there are major changes between?
I think the biggest change is, is actually in water and sewer. On page six, the materials and supplies and repair and maintenance for the water system, those are both significantly larger, I believe, than they were last time. And then the principal payment, this, this current year, we had a hundred thousand allocated to that, this, for the coming year, it's only fifty. I think those are probably the biggest changes, as far as, you know, dollar amounts. Oh, and then the last two pages is what I received from the Economic Development Planning Board for the district sales tax, and then the community donation fund. And those are the numbers I got straight from them. To kind of show you what they're looking at. And I don't know if this is something that they'll approve before they give us the final one, Tim, do you know?
This is the, the numbers that we came up with a committee and it was put together by Tom Martin and it was presented at the last Economic Development Meeting, and it's, it's on the agenda to be approved if it's all accepted by the board members at our next meeting, and that's scheduled for April twenty-second. What's the timeframe we need to accept this by?
I was going to put it on next meeting's agenda. And then if we, if we approve it by then, you know, with any changes that are made, then we'll have to have it on file for thirty days for the public to
Yeah, so it will, will, one of the final ones probably by the next meeting.
Then we'll approve, then after the thirty days, we'll be able to send it to the county. Well, use that for appropriations and send appropriations to the county, isn't that how you do it? Does the thirty days, like, start after we've made any changes, like, does that reset? I think it's after we pass it. So if we want to make changes, it should be in the next two weeks. So, very important to look this over, this is by far the most important thing we do of the year, in the year, so. Any questions or concerns, talk to the Finance Committee, or Tricia, or myself. We want to make sure it's right, so. It's balanced, that's good.
Yeah, and I know Matt did a really good job too, he, his is balanced. I think actually water is a little extra, but I'm sure we'll use it with upcoming projects.
Right.
It'll always find its home.
Okay, anything else for Tricia? Moving on to old business, we have an update on the force main, from Justin.
Hi, sorry I missed the last meeting.
That's all right.
Little bit of an accident, but, so, I guess I missed the discussion, so maybe I'll be repeating, so you can direct me to talk about something specific if you want, but, you know, originally we had decided that we were, well, first of all, you were in the situation where you had it permitted with the railroad, and when you actually went to locate the casing, it wasn't where anybody thought it was. So at that time, the decision was made that we would go ahead and try to get an extension of that casing permitted, as part of the old permit, knowing there were really three or four pretty major items that were needed to be exempted from their current standards, because in that same timeframe, the CN did update their standards. So, we, you know, we went ahead and made that submittal, and based on the information we got back, you know, it's, they're not going to, they're going to require a full new process, and it really doesn't look like they're probably going to waiver on those exemption items. So we had looked at what are the alternatives. So the alternatives really were to either line the casing, or line the existing force main that's in the casing from right of way to right of way, or to jack and bore a new casing in.
So, so we did request those exemptions, right, and that we requested those things, have we heard back officially yet?
So we got a response back with, that noted about fourteen or fifteen items that they needed to see. If, including some geotechnical reports and some shoring plans. When we get that close to the railroad, and we're talking, you know, a pretty substantial effort to design shoring, you know, we're probably a twenty thousand dollar effort to do shoring and do a geotechnical plan. So, with, with that, we could certainly do that and submit it, but based on the other comments we got, they didn't officially tell us no, but they asked for these items. So we could submit these items, and they could still kick it at the end, because of those exemption, exempt items. So, you know, bringing that to Matt, we kind of looked at, where else do we go with this without spending all this money on something that we know does not meet their current standard? And they don't, they haven't told us for sure, either way, that they will or won't accept it, but it's certainly appearing that they're not going to, and I think that that's the direction that they have indicated in that letter. That I, I shared a lot of those comments with Maggie, I gave that to Matt, and I had had a phone conversation with CN.
When we get letters like that, could you just, like, distribute copies to us?
Sure.
At least the Water.
Sure, yeah, no problem. Start getting an extra copy to Matt. So, you know, that's, that's where it sits. Sounds like there was some direction that you want to do, proceed with jacking and boring a new casing in. So that would be for the full one hundred footer right of way. The most recent one of these we did, similar sized pipe, being eighteen, would be required, eighteen, eighteen inch ID. It was about six hundred and fifty dollars a foot, so for your hundred feet, it's about a sixty-five thousand dollars to jack and bore that casing in.
So I'm clear, like, our pipe that we have there now, we are still allowed to maintain it, right?
You are, and, and actually you could line it without even getting a permit from the railroad.
So if we were to line it, we would have to dig closer inside than what they would like, but we're allowed to do that because we're maintaining it?
Yeah, we would have to line it from right of way to right of way. So you would have to go to outside the railroad's property on either side, and then we would shoot a liner through, from the right of way to right of way. We would not actually do any surface disturbance on the railroad property, and that's what we're, that's what means we don't have to have a permit. Because your permit with CN does allow you to maintain your existing force main.
So right now, if the ninety where it turns and goes under the track were to blow out, what would we do? It would start washing away the tracks, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's certainly potential for there to be issue if the ninety were to wash out. I mean, then you were moving to some sort of an emergency situation, and, and you're kind of, honestly, you'd be at the mercy of what CN wanted you to do. You know, your permit says that the, you're going to convey wastewater in this way through that force main, you know, should you start washing out their property, in theory, they could, they could make you shut it down. So you're probably in some sort of a bypass scenario, if that were to wash out.
What is your recommendation moving forward on this, out of those options?
So, if you were to line the force main, you could make the connection, you could get your new, you could get the pump station hooked up using your new force main, except for that hundred feet. We don't need to go through any permitting, you know, theoretically, we could bid that in the next month. In the future, then, you could come back in and put a new casing in, and put the new force main in. Hydraulically.
What size is the casing then?
So your existing casing is sixteen inches, and you have an eight inch pipe, carrier pipe, force main through there.
So that's not the issue then, the sizing then, it's not a factor, I should say.
So, right now, your pump station pumps through all, you know, fifty, four hundred feet of eight inch. We would, in the future, if we were to line it, it would pump through fifty-three hundred feet of twelve inch, and then, when we line that eight inch, it actually reduces the size slightly, so it's going to be, you know, a seven inch force main, let's say. A hundred feet of seven inch. So hydraulically, you actually have less head requirement at the pump station, even with that restriction in there, because essentially, you're pumping over a mile of eight inch now, anyway.
And the cost to line the pipe?
You're probably looking at three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars a foot.
So thirty-five thousand versus sixty thousand.
Yeah. And that would be, I mean, there would be some cost, I'm assuming that this would be something the city could, could assist with, is, you know, we're going to have to take those nineties off both ends, they can't line through, we're going to have to have a straight shot for them to line through.
So that's my question, like, the ninety is totally within the right of way, so how would we?
So, is, if, has that been identified, because based on the plans, it does not show that ninety to be within the right of way. But based on your permitted force main plans, it shows that ninety outside of the right of way.
It would almost have to be in, inside there right of way, the reason I'll say that is because that particular piece of pipe used to belong to the railroad itself. When they used it as a water line, they backwound.
Okay, but it hasn't actually been, it hasn't actually been located, correct?
Not physically, no. We're just going by what the drawing showed, and that's the drawing that I can maybe use what came from CN.
Okay.
At the time was Illinois.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, I know, like I said, that's drawing from nineteen whatever, but...
Okay, we may, we'll need to look, take a look at that drawing again, but based on the IEPA permitted drawing, it shows it outside of the right of way.
So if it is in the right of way?
Yeah, you're probably in a similar situation, but...
Are we still allowed to maintain it then? Is that all under the?
You, you can maintain your force main, but it, you cannot dig on their right of way. So there, if you're not on their right of way, you're able to maintain the force main by putting a lining through there, because you're not on their property. As a surface, you know, your subgrade.
I think the question Andrew is asking, and I'm not trying to step on you here, Andrew, is you got to be able to get to it to take it apart.
Correct.
And, and you're going to have to go in there and excavate in there right of way to get to that particular ninety.
If, if that is where, if that is where the ninety's located.
Correct.
So it sounds like there may be some question as to where that, that ninety is, I mean, we did see that that was, the casing wasn't quite.
I know, we didn't find it when we got, when, as far as they would allow us to excavate. And we had not found it at that point, they would not let us go another quarter of an inch.
Okay.
So, and that was twenty-five foot off center of the track.
Okay.
That's why we think it's within the...
And by the drawing that I'm referring, that came from CN, it showed that.
And you think you were in the right north-south alignment for it?
Pretty sure it was that way.
Okay, you were, you were able to locate it on the?
On, on the, like I said, on the drawing that they provided, not, not one that I had, one that they provided, I requested.
Okay.
I can ask a question?
Yes, you may.
So you shove a liner through a hundred and forty-year-old pipe, and you get fifty feet through a hundred-foot run, and you break the pipe. And what happens?
The liners you put in are fully structural, after the liner's in, the, the pipe could deteriorate away.
We're talking about getting it through the pipe, with all the barnacles and connections and all the stuff that happens in a hundred and forty-year-old pipe.
Just to be clear, Rick, I don't think the Water Committee is a fan of lining the pipe, just because if in the future, we'd still have the same problem, if we have to do anything, it would still be on their property. We're leaning towards, or at least, I should speak for the, I'm leaning towards the void and a jackie, I think is a better option.
And I figured you mentioned the sixty, thirty, that's about what we were talking about? Last meeting we had.
The question is, if we can, if we're allowed to maintain it, and we can daylight the ninety, it, it just feels stupid that we can't shove the pipe that we have right there through the same casing, and it's a win-win for everybody.
So the casing is significantly closer to the tracks on the, I guess it'd be the west side than was originally thought. So you're within you're within thirteen feet of the center line of the tracks on the west side, so you're, you're right up on the, I mean, you're essentially on the, where it's, you know, the and where it starts inclining for the rail bed. And that, and that's really, that's the issue, and that's, was the big exemption we were asking for. I mean, they didn't, they didn't let Mag dig twenty-six feet, and we're now talking thirteen. So we knew that it was, you know, a
Yeah.
A, a pretty big ask, I guess, a pretty big exemption we were asking for. We thought that perhaps the, you know, them knowing that, well, if we put a new casing in, that still, you still have an existing permitted force main that, you know, maybe we just bypass and abandon in place, would be enough to maybe make them reconsider that a little bit, but it doesn't appear that that's the direction that they, that they want to go. And, and this is, I mean, this is real typical of dealing with railroads, I mean, you know, they're, they have real specific requirements, and then they also, all of their requirements essentially allow the permit engineer to add additional stuff, additional things on, as required.
Okay.
So that's where it stands, and I just, we just need some direction, you know, how you would like me, if you would like me to proceed further.
What is your recommendation out of those two op?
Well, so my understanding was that we would be able to get to that ninety without being on there, without encroaching on their property. If that is not the case, then I think that you're basically down to jacking and boring a new casing in for the length of the right of way. I don't think there is.
So that's the crux of the matter.
I don't think there is another option.
I don't, yeah, because I, I don't think that was ever been made clear that that's the hurdle at this point before making the final decision on the boring under
Sure.
the re-lining, so.
And I, also, I think, I know it's the more expensive avenue, but if we're going to do this, and we're going to get a hundred foot, we're going to get out of there easement period. So we're no longer dealing with them. Am I following correctly on how we would do this? I mean, we're going to put it in there where either side of that track, if we have an issue, we're out of their hair. Like I said, I know it's the, the more expensive avenue, but I think, over the duration, I mean, we got, how many dollars worth of, how many feet worth of new pipe?
So when are we going to find this ninety? What's the timeframe for that?
Well, if the direction is that we're going to proceed with a, a new casing, I don't think we'll ever, I don't think we'll locate it intentionally.
Okay.
If we're going to put a new casing in, then that's what we'll permit, and, you know, it, I guess, in, in theory, it may be, it may need to be, that connection will potentially be impacted by that ninety.
You truly need to know whether the, the council's guidance is to go ahead and bore under it, or search for this ninety-degree connection.
Correct, yeah, that would be, that's kind of, that's where we're at. Or if, or, I, I guess the other option, and I don't, I don't think that this would be the correct option to do, is we could keep going down the road that we're going on, where, you know, they asked for some additional items. And, you know, we could spend more money to, you know, make some middles and try to get this passed, but we do know that there's some pretty serious deficiencies with the, the plan, with it being only thirteen feet. But that would be the other thing to consider. I don't know that that would be the, the right decision, because we could be six months down the road and tens of thousands of dollars in some middles to CN, and they could kill it because it doesn't.
Based on mine limited information, that's where we're at, that that's the best route going forward, so. Because there's no guarantee, the other direction. No guarantee that the railroad would allow it, I guess.
So, I'll tell you, the big deficiencies are, the casing's too small for a twelve-inch pipe based on their current standards, we're too close to their tracks to dig it up without some pretty serious shoring, if they will even allow it, and we're too close to their rail signals and controllers. And those are the three big issues of where the current's casing sits. And the hope was, because they had permitted it before, you know, maybe they would review this based on their past standards.
Right.
That it was a small deviate, where, you know, it's a small deviation based on their past standards that they had permitted. It's a large deviation based on their current standards.
Thank you, I understand.
Yeah.
I think we know what the recommendation from Matt and Justin is, I think we know what the recommendation from the Water and Sewer Committee is. In this case, I would like to make it fully official to get Matt and Justin the direction, the correct direction of which way to go moving forward with this force main project, so if I could get a motion, it's on the agenda, we'll, we'll take a roll call and we'll get this thing moving. I'll make a motion to direct Justin to go forward with the boring and jacking of the casing.
I'll second that.
Motion and second?
I'll second.
Tim's got second? Roll call, please. Whenever you get a chance.
Holterman Amberk?
Yes.
Kenauer?
Yes.
Maxheimer?
Yes.
Neville?
Yes.
Pomplusk?
Yes.
Brentmeister?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, so we'll get, we'll get started on that. I'll get you guys a breakdown of what, you know, what it'll be to, you know, everything we've done to date is still good. We just need to, you know, modify it, and then, there's, because, you know, we're going to be putting a new casing through, there's a few of those additional reports that need to be put together, but I'll go ahead and get Matt everything, a breakdown of what all that looks like. And then we'll go from there. Then we'll submit it to CN in the, say, the next four to six weeks, and we'll, and then it's, it's really up to them. They, they don't have a specific review period. We'll try to submit it over the, under the current permit application we have, to try to, you know...
Speed things up?
Yeah, exactly. And then also try to avoid the fairly substantial application fee. You know, it's, we're essentially, we're same intent to get a new force main under their tracks in the same locations. I don't see any reason why that's a, that's, to me, that's the same application, it's just a different approach. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, moving on to new business, the possible extension of the TIF district lifespan. Tim and the Finance Committee was able to get, get kind of in-depth on the TIF fund. There was a reconciliation that he has been working on that he has made, that was in everybody's boxes. Tim, would you like to explain this a little bit, or kind of get, get everybody up to speed on what you found and what you needed, what you were able to do?
What we had recently was the annual TIF Joint Review Committee, where all the taxing bodies that are currently giving up property tax revenue to the TIF fund do their annual review of how the TIF funds are expensed, and how much TIF funds will come in, and just verify or get comfortable with how they're being used. And at that time, we've come to a point where I was not clear on how, how much money we had in the TIF fund, and that's what prompted me to put together this reconciliation. The, the uncertainty comes from the point that we have, you know, fifty thousand dollars coming in each year for the TIF fund, and we're only spending twenty-six on an annual loan payment. And my question was, where's all the rest of the money going? And that's what prompted me to do this reconciliation. It was fairly easy, because we knew the zero point of this fund was the year two thousand of when that was erected. And, and this simply just totals up all the activity summarized each year, and matches to the balance as what's put into the annual audit that's done on the city. So, where we're at today is... So where we're at today is, is that we're truly at a zero point in the fund and we only have two years left of making annual loan payments. And then after that, we're free and clear. So using the financial statements to, to date, when we see twenty-five thousand dollars in, in the, in the black on this fund, uh, we have those monies available for future TIF projects. And, uh, and going forward, we'll only have the two remaining loan payments to be made. So at the next couple of years, we'll have seventy-five thousand dollars. Keep in mind, we're also getting to the end of the TIF, uh, lifespan and that TIF lifespan is twenty-three years. And, uh, current statutes allow for an extension for a further twelve years to the TIF. And, uh, one of the projects that's been considered was one that Rick's brought up and he's met with the Economic Development Board and they're interested in doing this because this is a project that I think everybody, I think you will agree too, that it's, uh, kind of important for the entire community. Would you mind sharing that with us, Rick?
Okay, well, uh, I attended the, uh, the TIF meeting on behalf of the Fire District and I've attended for several years in a row. And he is correct in what he said about there being a couple more years worth of revenue coming in, I believe three more. Uh, two of those years are gonna be expended to cover the loan. Uh, then the final year, the third year, there would be twenty-five thousand dollars or so available that could be used, uh, to, uh, fund the consulting work that needs to go along with extending the TIF. So that money, I think, could be used for that. Um, the, the monies that were spent before were to make improvements in inland tool infrastructure, uh, Chestnut Street. Uh, there's some other things that, that needed done, Water and Sewer, Lift Main, different other things up in that part of the, the town. But, uh, uh, one of the criteria was that the area had to be blighted. Well, I, I think that it is still blighted, especially with the grocery store the way it is and, uh, the old, uh, doctor's office. I think that, you know, the TIF would allow improvements to be made to that property, either purchasing the property or using funds to rehabilitate the property or to purchase other real estate. There's, uh, there's all kinds of things within the plan, uh, that you can use that money for. So the grocery store rehab might be just one thing that could be done. Uh, there could be a multitude of things that could be done with that. So, uh, that, uh, you could extend the TIF another twelve years and continue it on if you had a project that, that was worthy of that. So, uh, as the way I understood it, the consultant explained it, you have to have, uh, projects in place or some idea of your, what your projects might be. So, uh, what the consultant would do would, would help us to plan a project, uh, and a way to expand the money that we might bring in. So, um, I think the plan as it is, uh, is very comprehensive and I don't think we need to spend a lot of money. We could just continue on with what's in there because those same projects still exist. Those same problems still exist in that area. So, um.
You talk about the same problems that were in the original plan?
I, I think so, because if you read the plan, it's a, it's a thick document and there's lots of, it identifies lots of issues of blighting in the area, different things, conditions that need to be addressed and improved. So I don't think you'd have to spend a lot of money to, to continue the plan on and make a new plan. So I think you could save money there. Uh, I guess you.
Kind of like the Business District, we made it very general. That way we wouldn't limit ourselves to what we, to what we could achieve.
And the same thing would apply here. So I think, you know, I mean, you've got your different fund sources and things you can do. You'd have to keep track of how close you were to your limits on some of these things, which I don't think we're anywhere near that because I think it was four million dollars is what it was. So, um, I, I don't think you'd have to spend money on that, but the consultant would have to be involved in, in more of the, uh, the lobby, uh, end up, and you have to go around to the different taxing bodies and sell it to them. Uh, I, I don't know why any of the taxing bodies who have given up, uh, tax money would, uh, have any problems with this. It's simply because it's gonna improve the area in the long haul. So, uh, then you have to go to the state legislature and you'd have to, uh, uh, talk to, uh, Butler, our state representative and get that attached to a bill or, uh, somehow, uh, ran through the legislature where they could approve the extension of that. And I think it's fairly common to do that. So, um, as we left it with the consultant, um, I guess the city would have to decide to engage his services uh, if he wanted to continue it on. And, uh, I think the money is there to pay for it with existing, the last year with the TIF money. So I think, in my opinion, it's worthy to, uh, to extend that. I think it would, it would be in the best interest of the city to do that as long as everybody's in agreement with the other taxing bodies, so. I, I think it's a good idea.
Does, uh, does every taxing body have to say yes before it can be submitted?
Yes.
Now, one person says no, it's?
Yeah, and your, your biggest one would be the school.
Right.
Um, at the school, uh, I think, you know, they've got, they've got a little enhanced revenue here now because of the wind, uh, the windmills and, um, I don't know why, something that would stimulate economic development in the northeast side of town wouldn't be attractive to any taxing body.
I agree.
So, um, I think they would, they would probably be, well, you know, they're more than half of your tax bill when you look at your tax bill. So they would be the ones who would suffer the most. I don't know, it only brings in what, twenty-five, what'd you say, fifty thousand a year?
Fifty thousand right now, so.
Yeah, in the big scheme of things, uh, you know, the school missing out on twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next couple of years.
Ten thousand is probably ours.
Yeah.
Because we give up a share of ours to give to.
We do. So I don't think you'll have any trouble with the taxing districts. I don't, uh, the Fire District, I don't think there'll be any issues with them. Uh, so your biggest one would be the city. And I don't know, there's a half a dozen other ones, but I don't think it'd be a big deal.
So this goes out till twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three?
I think it's twenty-three.
When would we? I, I'm all for like, you know, making the area better, but without like a solid, some like good ideas of what would it actually turn into or what would the long-term plan be of the grocery store?
That's why I'm here, three years in advance. And, uh, that's why the Economic Development, uh, Board is in place. Uh, I, I can't tell you what to do with it down there or whether, you know, you know, it's kind of a blighted area. You've got, uh, buildings down there in, in disrepair. They could be fixed, they could be torn down, they can be whatever. You can acquire property and build new buildings, uh, uh, to attract other retailers in. I don't know, it's, it's wide open. So that's what your Economic Development Board, uh, comes up with, uh, good ideas on things to do down there. But I just think it's a source of revenue that, uh, shouldn't be just given up so easily. If you have to reapply and, and reinstate the TIF from scratch, it will be substantially more expensive than just extending it. And I, I will caution you, if there are, uh, projects that, uh, you say you're gonna do and you don't do and you accumulate monies in those funds, you'll have to give it out to the other taxing bodies. So you have to make sure, it's important that you have a plan and you have, you've got a, a plan to spend that money on something. Because if you don't, you have to give it back. And if you don't, the other taxing bodies are not gonna be happy and they're gonna want their money, so. You're right, we need a plan of some sort.
And so like, we'll have seventy-five thousand dollars to spend, you know, at, within the next three, four years down there from TIF money?
Two years.
I don't know, like fixing up the buildings is a, a great idea, but I don't, I don't know what we'd do with twelve more years of fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I guess the worst case is, you don't know what you're gonna do with twelve more years of fifty thousand or, or six hundred thousand dollars. Um, I'm sure it could be spent some, some way to improve things down there. And if not, you just turn the money back over to the other taxing bodies. You're not really out anything. So I think it's a win-win.
And the monies can be used in conjunction with the economic development money and the windmill money and all the projects that are in, in motion there too. So we have, you know, both of them working together and combine them for bigger, better things.
Yeah, we're not asking for a tax increase. Those will happen on their own, uh, with, you know, the increased assessments on the property. But, so we're not asking to add a one percent sales tax or anything like that. It's just to extend what's already there and direct those monies to be used in that area of town. Don't know what the project is, have no idea. But there are some bright young folks around it. They'll have some ideas.
And like Rick says, we need to have this done ahead of time because it takes a while to get anything through the legislature, as we all know in Springfield. And, uh, uh, I know three years seems like a lot, but in legislative terms, that's a short period of time.
Two, two years out at the minimum. I mean, if we're gonna do it, we need to have it done in the next year. So what's, I believe, I believe the first step is to come up with a plan. And if we feel the plan is good enough and, and everybody's on board with the plan, then we can go ahead and move forward with, uh, entailing the services of, of EDR.
Right, because they need to come up with, uh.
And they could help with the plan.
That, that's, and that's mainly why it's being brought up at this time is to, uh, you know, get the, uh, council's approval for those expenses and they'll come out of the TIF fund, so it doesn't affect. Which we already got twenty-five grand in there just to get the ball rolling. And if the plan doesn't come together, I hope it doesn't, but, you know, you know, we didn't at least try, so.
And I, I believe that, you know, we financed it to, to its entirety, which would have been, we'll have it paid off next year, twenty twenty-one, when we make that.
Two more payments, yes.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Didn't we, when Jim Fuhr was the mayor, didn't we extend it?
One year.
Just one year, was it?
And so you could collect that last year.
Okay.
Because the collections are.
Year behind.
Yes.
Ah, gotcha.
That's why it was extended. So that's why we're going to year thirty-five with this extension.
So we need a plan. Right?
Well, I would think so, and I think that, you know, would, would be directed to your Economic Development, uh, Committees to come up with, with some plans, you know. And I think that the bones of it are already there because the, the original plan still has needs that have not been met. So it's not like you're reinventing the wheel. The same problems still exist. It's nothing new.
Right.
You maybe need to get more specific with what you want to do with the money. You know, a Chestnut Street was done at that time, their force main project done at that time. Uh, there's assistance with, uh, uh, the subway down there, you know. So who knows? But there's a problem down there with the store and that whole area down there. So do you want to try to make it more attractive for a retailer to come back? Do you want to tear it down and start over? You know, this is a small piece of, of it, you know. And that, that doesn't have to be the only plan. There, there could be other needs that need to be met down in that area. So it's all, whatever is in your imagination. So the Economic Development Committee, I think, can play a big part in, in deciding what a specific project might be, but the plan is already in place. Those problems are still there.
Right.
Yeah.
I think we should give them the figures and see, give them a little time to work something out.
Look it up before, before we.
Give us a recommendation.
Before we, um, use the services of EDR.
Well, your consultant's charging you, I don't know, a couple grand a year to prepare a report and he works by the hour.
I think it's, I think it's a thousand dollars a year to maintain. He maintains it in every way, shape or form, really.
Yeah, and I, I think the total bill was what, a couple grand? You were at the meeting. So, and I don't know what his hourly rate is. I didn't want to talk too long because I didn't want to get bailed for it, so. But anyway, I think you, uh, could engage him, find out what his hourly rate is and we've got, you know, monies to engage him and, and get some answers. So I think it's worth, worth doing. And the money's there to, to, to explore with, so I don't think you're really out of anything. So you would just need to know, and I guess the question is, do you want to engage his services now to further explore this?
Yes, that would, that would be the motion that would need made. And it would, and we all know that it would come out of the TIF fund anyway, so it would not affect the general fund. Yeah. I guess that's where we're at.
So I guess you were asking for a motion?
I believe I, I, yeah. I'll entertain one if some, unless, unless there's more discussion. I mean, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page before we do this.
I think it's a good idea and I'm, I'm for it. I, I would rather have the Economic Advisory Board give us like five things. Like here's what, you know, here's some things that we think would be a good idea. Like, I, I just rather have the plan before I say we're gonna take the money. Like, I don't, I don't think getting the money upfront and then figuring out what to do is the right.
Oh, right, right. I mean, the, the plan would have to be first, you know, be- before we make the meeting with the other taxing bodies, we, we gotta have a solid plan. And if, you know, we either, we either use the services of, of, um, what's his name?
Daniel.
Daniel now, or we, we give it to the Economic Development Board for a month and put it on the May meeting where we move forward with Daniel and, and the, and the board and us doing it, starting the collaboration now, I think is where we're at with it. We do have time. If we want to wait a month before we ascertain the services of, of Daniel, I'm up for that as well.
I'll make a motion to get it started because I think we'll need Daniel's input with regards to the ideas and how, uh, valid those ideas are for moving forward.
Motion to.
I think you need to get Daniel and the Economic Board together.
Yeah.
To get a good plan.
And that would, you know, that's what this motion is, to, uh, get him involved with it and just, uh, that the council's in favor of these expenses coming out of the, uh.
Because otherwise you're throwing the money away.
Exactly.
And I'll, I'll second that.
Motion to attain the services of Economic Development Resources to expand and, expand the TIF district lifespan and, um, create a new chemilute plan, comprehensive plan.
Yes, it's just a.
Estimate what that would cost.
I'm gonna say less than five grand.
I would say.
Because this is just the beginning of it, you know, and if, if the, when the next stage comes up, it'll be discussed at this level in my mind. So.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Holman, Amrick?
Yes.
Kenauer?
Here.
Maxheimer?
Yes.
Neville?
Yeah.
Palpus?
Yes.
Rettmeister?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
I'll be adjourned. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on to water loan lump sum, lump sum payments. That was discussed, uh, at the last meeting briefly. Uh, there was some discussion about, um, about, you know, the, the budget and, and making sure we had the accounts right to go ahead and move forward with that. Is the, Andrew, do you want to?
Yeah, so last year, we made a, an extra fifty thousand dollars towards our water tower loan payment. Like after we got the, the, uh, we had two loans, we got the one loan paid off from the well and then we just kind of rolled that money over into the water tower. We're planning to do the same thing this year. Uh, we, we budgeted for it, so we thought it was a good time to go ahead and do that. I don't know, Tim, do you think otherwise?
I think otherwise. Uh, at this time, we have not determined what the true balance is in that fund and, uh, in my mind, that, that needs to be done first before we start allocating the amounts of such as fifty thousand dollars. We have a lot of projects going on and just to make sure that this is the best route, uh, in use of this fifty thousand dollars, considering we got the North Main extension going on, um, obviously the boring of under the railroad for the forced sewer main.
That'd be the sewer, but.
Excuse me, yeah.
They're, yeah, I, I get confused too.
And, uh, lastly, we got Lift Station Three, that's gonna be in need of significant repairs too. So, uh, it's just in my opinion, all that has not been fully vetted as to what's the best use of that money for all those reasons. I'm uncomfortable, uh, making a decision upon that fifty thousand at this juncture.
So the current, uh, so the current balance is three hundred and thirty thousand for this month's deposits. Uh, after our discussion last time, we know there's stuff that was charged to the sewer fund that could be charged to the water fund. Uh, that total amount is a hundred thousand dollars. So like, even if we, worst case scenario, we transferred all of that to the water fund, we'd be down to two hundred and thirty. Uh, after the fifty thousand, we'd down, down to a hundred and eighty. We're still, like we discussed, we're still pretty comfortably, uh, can make that payment. And I, if you want to wait a month, that's fine. I'd like to get it done in this financial year. But I feel pretty comfortable with it.
Are we sure that the, uh, that everything's reconciled with what was going on with the Water and Sewer? We're not. So that's the.
No, because there's still that outstanding, uh, due from sewer, but we don't think it's all sewer.
Wait, that's due to the general fund?
Due to the general fund from sewer.
Okay.
But I think Tim's concern is, is not knowing how accurate that figure is because we don't think it all belongs in sewer.
So that's a total of about a hundred thousand dollars that should have been dibbied up better, but it looks like it was all charged straight to the sewer. So fixing that would remove some of it to come out of the water fund.
Yes.
I see.
That, I think that's Tim, that's Tim's concern.
That, yes, and I have not been able to get with Estes Bridgewater to see their supporting work papers, to see how all those figures were determined. Obviously, uh, before April fifteenth, not the best time to try to get anything out of those folks. So unfortunately, we're at standstill on that particular front at this time.
Did we, when we took out, when we took out the sewer loan or the line of credit, it was a hundred thousand dollars. Was that, was that in this last fiscal year? So that might be, it might be owed in their audit because did we make, did we take out, do all that stuff after June one of last year?
That was before June one.
It would have been before.
Was it before? Okay.
Yeah.
I can't remember when we did that. Cause we had, well, we had to, because we had to pay them back by the end, we had to pay the general fund back by the end of the fiscal year. Correct? After the force main? After the force main took more money than what we thought, that's when we had to get the line of credit and it had to be paid back before June first.
Those are the questions that we're gonna be trying to verify as part of.
I'm just making sure that we, we made, you know, we got the loan before June one. Or, or, yes.
The force main, yes.
Yes, that way it would show in fiscal year seventeen instead of eighteen. Okay.
So when, I don't know, realistically, a month from now, if we made the payment then, it would still come out of this year's budget.
Yes.
Will you feel comfortable in a month from now?
Well, I hope to. Once we iron out that the numbers are reliable and we know what they mean, you know.
I said we have three more meetings. Do it at the second main meeting, too.
Things have a way of.
Getting drug out.
Down the road.
Put that on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll talk about it at all three of them until we figure out what the best course of action is, please. Uh, yes, the water, the water loan lump sum payment.
So I would like to discuss also like how we got here. So the water fund, like the water committee, you know, we made this recommendation. We were gonna have it put on the bills and be voted upon tonight. Is that sufficient? Like, how do you, how do you want that to work?
Well, it needs to be done before the bills if it's a recommendation.
So last, like last month when we recommended it, you just think we should have discussed it more?
No, it needs to be brought before the council as a recommendation and discussed, is my opinion.
In addition to be voted upon at the bills?
The bills is after the fact, the check's written.
But it's not signed. So like we, in the past, we've had bills come in and we say, no, we're not gonna pay that one or whatever, just exclude it from the bills.
Right.
I'm just trying to work together. I understand that, I don't know. Give me guidance on how you want these things handled in the future.
It's not, it's not my opinion.
It says in the minutes that it was brought to the full council. The committee would recommend making a lump sum payment on the water tower loan. Tricia Alesworth will put it on the next accounts payable. So it has been brought up.
And if.
There was only three words talked about it, is my understanding and recollection.
So these minutes have been approved, so.
I mean, either way, I mean, just give me guidance like how you want it done in the future. Is that sufficient? And we just need to vet it out a bit more on what we're thinking or?
You need to, in my mind, from the reading of the ordinances and the municipal handbook, that committees are only create, you know, are charged with whatever the council has tasked it to do. And then the committee is to report back to the council with what they concluded and any recommendations, so. The other thing that's interesting, the ordinances reference that there should be three council members to each committee. And obviously, they need to be subject to OMA and have minutes and all those things, just like we do at the economic development board. So some of this is new to me. Obviously, I'm the new guy here, but at the end of the day.
Usually the only ones that meet are the water and sewer and those agendas are posted in minutes taken.
The whole thing is, in my mind, is that the committees are generally utilized when there's so much stuff to be addressed by the council that the tasks are delegated between all the committees. And here, obviously, I don't know if the police committee's ever met in the last year and things like that, that there's no reason that any issues regarding water cannot be brought before the full council.
Oh, absolutely.
As a council as a whole, you know, to me.
I agree with that, but. I, I just think there's a lot of stuff that we go over, like individual bills, when we have leaks and stuff like that, meter repairs. And like, we usually fill up the full hour and I just don't know that if we want to discuss it here, we can. It just drags on longer. I feel like we're wasting people's time.
We can go through all the police bills too. Why don't they meet for the same reasons?
I don't mean bills, I mean like.
Well, you just mentioned bills.
The bills is in like Joe's water bill. Had a leak, he wants a discount for so-and-so.
Was the committee even charged with doing that task?
I believe the committees work, work more, work better than what we think that they do. Is, can it be changed? Yes. I think, and it should only be changed really, in my opinion, in terms of appropriating funds. I don't think the water and sewer committee spent any more money than what they have to and it's under the direction of Matt. Matt's in charge of his own budget and he does a good job of staying with that.
Is he a member of that committee?
He attends the meetings.
Is he a member?
They don't make any, they don't make any, he's a, he's a member and, and, you know, he takes the committee's advice as they take his advice. You know, the better they work together, the more things.
I'm just saying that anything involving money and changes in policy need to become before this council.
I agree.
You know, other than that, you know, they can meet and talk all day, but they don't necessarily have the authority to do anything and.
And that's fully understood. And I, and we've had policy changes before, like how we're gonna handle refunds on, you know, if somebody has a leak and we're gonna credit their account. We brought that to the full council. We explained what our process was gonna be.
Okay.
We kind of exercised that.
So things like that going forward probably need to be better explained to new members such as me and the new council members going forward.
Absolutely. That's a point well taken.
I don't know what anybody else on, you guys have any comments on that?
I'm new, just like you, Tim. I'm still trying to figure everything out and how everything works.
You know, cause a lot of this stuff, you know, you know, like the stuff we were talking about with Justin today, I was oblivious to all of it, you know, so. And that's, those are big dollars in my mind, you know, so to me, a lot of that stuff needs to be discussed at the full council.
What Justin spoke about tonight?
Oh, boring under it and all those different things.
That was discussed at the last meeting.
In general, you know. Yeah.
Well, I mean, right, and that's why we didn't, that's why we didn't really make a movement on it until we, you know, until we had the engineer can answer all the questions we needed to answer. Cause it, it also says in the minutes, those same numbers that Justin spoke about tonight. So it was, it was talked about, but I'm glad that we waited for Justin. That way we could get the full, you know, full information from his professional opinion before we went forward on it, so.
So the, I mean, while we're at it, like the, I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement on what the committee is. I don't want to cause friction. I just want to work together and get stuff done that needs to be done.
Well, it boils down to what can the committee do, what can the committee don't do, and it's not written anywhere.
We're still trying to figure out too. Well, Jim Fuhr didn't even have committees.
And that's why I prefer committees of the hold and that way everybody participates. Everybody's given the same information and I don't think it's as overwhelming as it's been characterized here.
Okay.
That's just my two cents at the end of the day.
Right.
Because there was a time when there were not and we, Jim Fuhr was the mayor at the time and there were no committees. And then we turned that around and got it, cause that's the way it used to be. So we got to turn back into committees and felt that that was important to have those people.
And it's required by the ordinances, yes. But, you know, from reading the Illinois municipal handbook, that the committees are a creature of the council and the council charges them with particular tasks to research or whatever the case may be and to come back with their conclusions and recommendations, you know. That's how I read it. Now, if we're gonna do something else, we probably need to codify it in my opinion. Of what they can and cannot do.
Okay, so I mean, I brought it back. The, there were two more items that we, that I mentioned that I would just like to make sure we're on the same page on. One is the meter replacement. So we set goals and we're gonna try to get the meters done in about five years or in place about a hundred and fifty meters per year. So do we need to go over that more as a full council? I, I feel like we've, in the past, have mentioned the meter, the new meters enough and, but if.
How much is the new meters approximately?
About two hundred and fifty dollars. So it is a substantial amount.
Then that, I think it needs to be discussed here at least once every year to revisit that or.
That's been discussed and approved years back. I mean, we, we've had, the council's known about that moving forward. We've been putting in our budget for the last at least two years.
Yeah, it's budgeted for, yes.
I'm just saying, just to revisit annually because circumstances change since we have the, the lift station project, North Water Main and, you know, unsuspected areas. That's all I'm suggesting from that perspective. And it is a material amount in my opinion.
Right, and you know, this is the best time of year to do it because our budget's out.
Exactly.
You know, any line item, I know we put a line item in there for meter replacement if I'm not mistaken, right? I think we called it materials supplies, but we upped that years ago.
See, there's another weakness. You call it materials and supplies. Nobody knows what that number truly represents.
And if you have questions, you know, we can try to find a good answer.
The categories are generalized, you know. You got fifty thousand there, but you got a generic term there and, you know, the reader, even the public would not know exactly what you folks mean or whoever put it together means behind that number.
That would have just been what was coded last year under general fund, fund seven, five, zero, 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 zero. That's, basically, that's how the budgeter's made is that's what was coded to that, that's what was coded to that line item last year. I, I feel we're being transparent as far as what we're spending on because if someone wants to make a four-year request and find out exactly what that line item of funds went to, they, we absolutely can give that to them.
So there is a supporting schedule to that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, materials and supplies, that'd be seven, five, zero, zero, zero. You can look up what was coded to that, to what was coded to that part of our, of our fund and find out exactly what that was spent on.
In other words, where we spent money.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm saying why you put fifty thousand or whatever the number is in that category today in that particular budget.
This budget looks different, the little bits than like Crystal did it. Crystal based hers on, on last year's, so we were finding.
We did that this year.
What's that?
And we did that this year.
Yes, you did. Okay, sorry.
Except for the some exceptions that Matt agrees.
Right.
A few line items.
There's another thing. We didn't have a budget until Crystal came. For the longest time, we would just appropriate three percent higher than what we did the previous year. We spoke about it for about five.
You understand my point, you know, you just got a blank at fifty thousand and no right of reason.
No, that's what we spent on it last year.
And that's, that's what I'm saying is that that number should be twenty thousand meters or whatever the case may be. In a perfect world, I think.
In a perfect world. I mean, it's already nine pages long.
Well, I'm just saying if somebody wants to know what's behind there, we're in a position to say, this is how that number was developed.
Oh, absolutely, we are. I, I fully think that we can answer that question for them.
It exists today.
Yes, I think that it does. Wouldn't you say, Matt, Tricia? I mean, we can just look at, we should be able to have Abbott's look up of everything that was built, materials and equipment would be seven, five, zero, 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 zero.
Do you have a detailed bill list of what's charged that and that's what you could give them?
No, you're confusing. You're saying what's spent on that account as of today for FY nineteen. I'm saying the document in front of you is for FY twenty and somebody can ask you why you got a certain sixty thousand, fifty thousand to a particular account. How did you come up with that in the budget?
Because that's about what we spent last year on that account.
So it has no identity and there's no real, nothing behind it. It's just.
Unless we want to make it more.
Ballpark estimate.
Unless we want to make it more. It's what it took us to operate last year.
So.
Yes.
I can tell you how several, how I come up with that formulation. What I did was I took where we stood at the end of twenty eighteen and each one of those line items, okay? So I knew what we had spent from June one to the end of December.
Okay.
So basically, I took that number and I multiplied that by two. So that would give me a rough idea, I mean, actually a fairly close idea of where I was on target to spend. So then whenever I go to make adjustments in my budget accordingly, I may have pumped it just a tick higher in some areas because I foreseeing something different or just moved it around because I knew that, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, if I need to ship funds here to accomplish this project, whether it's meters or if it's, you know, whatever it might be. But that's where the bases come from.
Right.
Now, I'm not saying this is the greatest thing in the world, a way to do it, but to me, it made the most amount of sense.
If, if we think we should break down each one of these funds for what it was all spent on last year, we can.
I'm just saying that's a potential question coming up. You know, does it, and taking into account how we're gonna finance all these projects and all that. And none of that's gonna be included in the last year's expenditures. You see what I'm saying?
Kinda. Can say it again, so.
I mean, you got new expenditures that are not reflected. In a perfect world, you would have the same expenditures every year.
Yeah, well, that's not, yeah.
Well, now we're gonna have additional expenditures. Is that taken into account in that budget?
For which ones? For the water stuff, pretty well in there. For the sewer, it's not all accounted for. So mainly the force main, boring, jacking, we can probably finance that under our current budget. But for the lift station, we're gonna, like, that's not accounted for.
And how can you say you can probably finance it? How would you demonstrate that to me?
Just based on how much we have budgeted for in there.
So the sixty and seventy thousand, we should encompass that. And you have no breakdown behind that.
That's correct. So for repairs and maintenance, which is what we consider that, we don't normally have very many repairs and maintenance on the sewer.
Okay.
Knock on wood. So the forty thousand is pretty much going towards that project.
And how did you come up with forty thousand?
That's what we had last year.
But that does not include.
We did not spend it all.
So you have not made a, any particular specific estimate of what that number should be, other than just guessing it should be around forty thousand?
I think we know that that's not sufficient, that that's what a realistic budget is for the income that we have.
Okay, so.
Help, all right, so I feel very condescending to you right now, like I'm doing the best and I'm asking for help. Like if you want it done a better way, we can do it a better way. We're on the same team.
I think when you're looking at the budget, you have so much to spend and you know you're not gonna be able to budget a new lift station of two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. Right?
Right.
So you know you're gonna have to have some money, so some of that money, of that forty, may be used for that, but obviously, it's not gonna pay for the whole thing.
Right.
So the rest of it's either gonna be financed, increase in rates, whatever.
I'm just saying, how much is the finance payment's gonna be once that's expended?
Principal on loan, eighty, eighty-ten, the last ones on the sewer, we have fifty thousand dollars of our sewer fund committed to principal on loan, six thousand to interest. So it looks like, I would guess we usually spend about, did we spend about fifty-six thousand dollars last year on the sewer payments?
Probably.
Probably, and that's probably where that comes from.
So that includes the interest on the, the money that we just recently borrowed. It doesn't include principal on that.
All I'm saying is probably need to be a little bit more accurate than what we're doing.
Okay.
You know, we don't buy a car and then find out we can't make the payments and that's kind of the impression I'm getting here.
Well, when we financed, when we get done financing the sewer, when we financed the water, we put a surcharge on the water bill.
Okay, and has that been looked at?
Yes. It should be right on.
Yeah, no, we took.
We, we took it per customer, okay, it might be, it might be twelve dollars off, Tim, but we took eight hundred and fifty-seven customers times a four thousand month, four thousand a month payment.
Then that's all I'm asking is that.
Line item on the water bill.
That's fair enough, that, that's what, where the missing piece is gonna be, that we're gonna increase water rates to offset whatever these payments.
Yeah, but we're not gonna do it for the sewer until we complete the project, till we know exactly how much, till, till we finish the line of credit. Cause right now, we're just paying interest from the line of credit.
Then that's the part that need, that's the missing link then.
I guess, yeah. I mean, that was, I, see, that's the thing. We, we knew, I knew that. Andrew knows it, Matt knows it. You didn't, maybe you didn't know that.
Again, that's where the newbie guy comes.
Right, and I understand that.
All right, so it sounds like you just have questions that we need to talk through and we can talk through those.
Yeah.
Ask questions when things come up. I mean, I, I appreciate your input. Back to the meters. Do we feel like we need to vote on that or is that, okay? Back to the meters. Do we feel like we need to vote on that, or is that, okay? Is that something that we're gonna start, like, we have some?
In my mind, I think you need to vote on it.
I believe that was our, I'd, I'd have to look in the minutes, but that improvement plan on the meters was already passed through council several years ago. Do you think any money we, that the council approves, you know, for improvement plans, does that need to be revoted on each year, or?
That's my two cents.
Okay.
I don't, I worry, like, I totally get where you're coming from, like, we need to vote on everything, but at some point, like, Matt needs to buy meters. We don't need to wait for us to approve him buying meters, then he goes and buys meters, and then we approve the bills. And, I don't know, like, I'm open to a better system, but I, I don't. It's, yeah, I don't know.
You guys already got a base plan of how many you're doing per year, correct? So you know that's coming, so that shouldn't even be an issue. Shouldn't even be realistically talking about it. You know you're gonna pay this much, about this much money every year for those meters, correct? So that shouldn't even be a discussion, cause it's already been voted on. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
I, yes, I believe so.
Alright.
So that should be taken care of. We have found in the past that the, that the, that the, that the account could handle it. And at Matt's advice, you know, I don't, I, I think that Matt has the best, best idea on how to spend the money for the water. And if, and if we think, between his advice and the, and the advice of the committee, if we think that meters were a way to go, and I think that's, that's why we did it that way.
You know, there's no doubt the need, meters need to be gradually replaced, that they do wear out over time, is my understanding, you know, and.
Right.
Uh, in my mind, you know, depending on circumstances, that, that, that subject needs to be revisited at least once a year. Maybe in the budget process or whatever, you know, and again, it's part of my ignorance, being the new guy here.
I wouldn't call it, no, 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 I'd call it devotion, because I mean, you're, you're serious about what about.
Well, you know, in my mind, when we talk, um, you know, thirty, fifty thousand dollars, that becomes in the material realm, you know?
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, in my mind, with the circumstances of, uh, we got several ongoing projects, maybe it should be debated whether we should go ahead with spending thirty thousand, maybe that money can be better utilized in a different area.
So to be clear on the water fund, we have one project. Just the water main extension.
Just the water main extension.
And that's, uh, fifty to sixty thousand.
Right, cause I, I keep thinking of water and sewer together.
That's because in separate, that's because in the audit, that's how they did it.
That is, they, yes, they combined those two.
Yes.
The sewer fund is, yes, that's, that's tight, and I, I thought we explained that last, uh, meeting as well, that we have a lift station that's gonna be serious work. We wanna kick it down the road for a few years until we can afford it, or how we wanna do that. Alright, the last thing that I had is the water fund owes the general fund some money, and we need to pay that off every year. Again, how do we want those transfers to happen? So the, they used to happen automatically. They haven't happened for a long time, like, they've kind of built up. But we need to make the general fund pay back from the water. The water fund can easily support that and pay its debt. The sewer fund is questionable until we get the transactions figured out. So, how do we, cause like.
We'd have to do it by June one, wouldn't we?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Yes, we would.
So I'd like to train, I, and again, I think this is just another bill that would get voted on next billing cycle. But that transfer from the water fund to the general fund to pay off its amount that it owes it can happen. But if, if we need more discussion on it, I don't, I don't know. I don't wanna talk about this every month about making the transfer. It needs to be kind of automatic.
It is automatic, right?
Well, currently, um, Abbott's has been better. They, they missed a few months, I think, and that's why there's still some kind of sitting out there in due from. Will send me, Lori will send me, say, we need to transfer for, and I'm assuming there, it's for the accounts payable to pay that back. But if there's anything else that was out before, that may be what's in the due from.
So can we go ahead and pay that?
I mean, so I mean, once, once, maybe, once we get it all paid off and we can keep up with it each month from the payables, cause that's usually what it is.
So we did pay it off like a year ago, right? I mean, I know we did, and it's just kinda like accumulated again, so it's now just like, you know, in this fiscal year, let's get it paid off back down to zero.
In my mind, that's what we hope to do with reconciliation, that we make one transfer, like you said, and get it all kosher across the board.
Yeah.
Is that where you wanna be?
Yeah, and I, I, my feeling is, we know we owe at least the seventy-nine thousand. Once we get the, go ahead and pay that off, and once we get the rest of them figured out how much other it is to transfer that at that time. So are we okay making a transfer now? Or have it approved in the next month or bill?
The number, the number, the number that's in the, just the water, just due from the water. And then, once we figure out the sewer, cause I'm sure some of that sewer is actually water. Is that what you're saying, Adrian?
We can put it on the next agenda to vote on it, to reconcile the accounts. I think that it's okay to do it now because we're required to do it by law. It has to be done before June one.
We're not, yeah, so we're not spending money, we're just.
Moving it, yeah. I mean, that's one of those things that, like I said, when Abbott sends me the numbers, they're transferred, and that's the way when, um, Crystal was here, you know, once a month.
Crystal reconciled the accounts herself.
Yeah, she, I mean, she would just, you know, she would bring it to the bank and we would, they, you know, would transfer those amounts between those accounts.
Right.
To keep them even. And I think over the last year, it's just kinda gotten, hasn't been consistently done every month.
Right.
And then with the audit, I think that threw it all off too. But we can just, you know, if they can keep up with it, and just, we just do it every month, and then it shouldn't be an issue going forward, once we get this one cleared up.
The water fund can cover, pay its debts. I'm confident in that.
So basically, what you're gonna do is pay its debts, be clear of it, do it every month now.
Yeah.
And we're just transferring money.
Well, it's gonna be one transfer to even them up.
Yeah.
And then after we pay the bills, it should be automatic, like Tricia said, working with the, with Abbott.
I'm pretty sure that was in their accounting agreement to reconcile those accounts every month. Maybe it was to reconcile the bank accounts.
Well, it's better that we, we have financial statements that will be more reliable and understanding going forward, that we don't have this to and from all the time.
Right.
Whatever that financial statement says is what's actually there. So is that where?
Yeah.
You'd ideally wanna be, so.
I mean, cause that could just be an automatic thing, unless for some reason, there's something going on and, you know, obviously, it's a larger amount, and we have to finance it or do something different, then.
Right, okay.
Then, I would say, then that would have to be a discussion of the council about how to pay for it. To leave it in a due from or to borrow money if we can.
The sewer will be a conversation, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So what's the amount we should transfer from your analysis?
For the water, we should, I feel like we should transfer it all. For the sewer, we're holding off until we get them figured out. But we do need to try to do it this fiscal year.
Right.
Right now, we don't have enough money to transfer.
Yeah, cause as of, has it, have, have they sent out the March ones yet?
I haven't gotten it.
Okay, I also make sure I didn't miss it. Cause right now, it's due from waters, almost fifty-nine thousand. As of the end of February. But I just transferred from, did a transfer for the accounts payable.
For this month.
For this month. Or I guess it probably would've been for March. For March payments.
So it'd be fifty-nine is what we would transfer?
I think it was seventy-nine.
Six.
Sixty-nine.
Yes. Sixty-eight, something. But go ahead and do that, and then.
And the sewer we'll do next month or next meeting, is that what you're thinking?
Um, I, I'm hoping that we get the, the charges that were put to it, get that figured out. Either way, I don't, even if we transfer most of it, I'm not sure we're gonna have enough to, to cover that.
Not, not on the sewer.
It'll be close. So our current balance is ninety-two thousand dollars in the sewer. We owe the general fund a hundred and thirty-seven. So if we split it up, it'll be pretty close, and we are bringing in about nine thousand.
Well, once we get it reconciled, have a little comfort level, we can do it, so. So you wanna do the fifty-nine to nine, or sixty-nine to nine?
Reconciliations of, of the accounts is not on the agenda. If we do it, we're gonna have to do it the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Can you put that on the agenda for the next meeting, please?
Does that need to be voted on? I thought we just got some.
Let's just go ahead, let's just try to get it all ready for next meeting, and then we'll vote on it.
Okay. So, the water tower lump sum, I'd like to approve that next meeting, unless you still have questions about it. And, and as well as the transfer.
That's fine.
You already got the water loan on there, don't you?
The lump sum.
I have the budget. And the water loan, and reconciliation accounts.
Any further new business? Any?
To talk with the internet people?
Yes, I was, there's no, I was gonna do that in other business, uh, which is now. Yes, I met with them last night, and they are going to get something together for us. It looks like, looks like what they're gonna do is they're gonna try to pull, since, since they're not hardwired fiber optically from here, they would pull from, what did they say, Mawikwa? They would jack it into our tower. The tower would send it to, uh, a couple of hotspots along the square, and it would come from the outside end, so they would have to get permission from people's buildings and stuff like that. I told them on average, I'd, I'd, about two hundred and fifty people would be what would be the bandwidth that we would need. Um, it was, it wasn't as informational as what I thought. Tim, you wanna add? You were able to make it. You were here. That's about it. Um, there's gonna be numbers for us.
Right.
We went on and on about joint ventures, about how we could provide internet to all the citizens within our wireless. We would own the infrastructure. He, he lost me there for a while. You know, cause, because obviously, that's things that are, that's, that's a big, 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 big picture. We're just trying to get wide.
Right, yeah.
So are you, would that be something that we would pay for?
I believe we would, but it's gonna be pretty cheap.
It's gonna be very minimal because they were gonna sell us the equipment at cost, and I think they were gonna trade off the labor installation for them to put their equipment on our infrastructure, so that they can sell their product to anybody in the surrounding area.
And then going forward, we would get free internet to our infrastructure?
We could do that, probably, more than likely, yes, because we'll be our own administrator, if I understood him correctly.
Yes.
And we can turn up the bandwidth, or turn down the bandwidth, all those type of administrator functions ourselves, so. And like Matt said, long-term, they do have a, uh, an option of potentially, uh, running, uh, fiber optic to all of our residents in the right of ways, and that they've done that in other communities. But for the time being of just getting square, the town square internet, uh, for, uh, visitors and whatnot to look up stuff, this seems to be a pretty reasonable option.
Yeah.
And I look forward to seeing what their written proposal is.
So just a bit of background, we had the CCA company from Lincoln, uh, approach, I think it was two years ago. And their offer was, they will simply put their stuff on our tower in exchange for providing free internet to the square for.
Okay.
That was their, and, uh, we had the contract signed, and their person who was capable of doing that quit, and it never happened.
Oh, that was a couple, two years ago or something like that, was that, wasn't it?
I forgot about that.
So we did try to, I, I contacted them several times, you know, trying to figure out a way to still make it happen, but uh, after their, I think the guy who kind of understood what was going on and how to do this stuff quit. They didn't feel comfortable doing it.
They plan on coming to a meeting whenever they get a proposal and explaining it, in better terms of what I could explain it, that's for sure. Any other business? Oh, I did have one thing that Brian Gotti called me back from Cat Financial. They will refinance the balloon if that's the route we wanna go. So, we had, so we can either, you know, we can either pay that off, we can do that, we can do that at the end of the fiscal, we can do that next fiscal year or two. Because they said the payment wasn't due till July, July twenty-first. I told them June one, but the guy from Cat Financial on the phone told me it was July twenty-one. Maybe that's, maybe they, maybe they send the bill July twenty-one, and it's due, or June, and then it's due in July, but that's what he said.
I was thinking that paper said June, but if that's what he said.
He is going, Cat Financial's gonna give me some numbers to, uh, you know, about the cost of financing, uh, whether we do it for two years, three years, four years, or whatever. We'll have that to compare, and I would imagine we probably would shop around financing, if that's the route we take.
Do we know what interest rate we're paying now?
Six.
I don't remember.
It's fairly high, cause there's a balloon at the end, you know, so they gotta get their, their interest along the small principal. Or a principal minus forty-four thousand dollars. Matt wants to keep it back though, so we either re-lease, that was the other option, is we don't pay the balloon and we re-lease. I think it's not a good idea. If we can, if we can have something that we own as an asset.
I got thoughts going forward on that, but yes, keeping it is first or most.
Okay, so we'll, that's, we're on a waiting game there. We'll wait to hear from Cat, Cat, Caterpillar Financial. See what numbers they give us back. In the meantime, as we're doing this budget, we'll see if we can afford to pay it, twelve, twelve, and twelve. And, uh, we'll go from there. We have, we have till July to do that, so.
Hey, man, I think you need to look at hours here and all that in consideration of what, you know, on, on back of also.
Oh, it's.
But how long we finance it, you mean?
Oh, it's worth more than, it's worth way more than forty-four thousand.
I just think you need to.
If we balloon.
I just wanna make sure you clarify all that.
Yes, we can do that. I mean, it's a two, that was brand new in what, twenty-fourteen? Twenty-fourteen, so it's five years old. What's it got, twenty-five hundred dollars on it?
I do not know the hours on it. We've kept up with all the maintenance top notch, so.
Yes, we'll, we will double check that. I would, I would, I bet it's worth seventy-five, just off the top of my head.
Very possible it could be in that range.
Okay. I'll have Mort report on that very soon. That was the only other, other business I had. Any public comments on the non-agenda items? Greg, did you have anything, or?
No.
Okay.
All the rental inspections are going good. We've got a lot of people have reported that they had rental properties that weren't being inspected, so.
Good.
We're doing that. Uh, I think we've got six or eight to re-inspect, uh, that failed earlier in the year. Lot more building permits than we used to have too, so.
That's good.
Keeping me hopping, but, you know, it's, uh, I'm just coming along fine.
Thank you, Greg.
Paula is a gem.
I agree.
I'm telling. She's, uh, she really, uh, she really makes, she makes it easy sometimes.
That's good.
I know it's not easy on her, but.
Yes. No, she does a great job.
Fantastic.
Any other public comments? Is there any need for an executive session? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Close? Motion passes, meaning, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Justin.